All right, good evening, everybody. Before we begin, as you can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, and let the record show that all board members are present, with the exception of Mrs. Brown, who I know is on her way. Can you guys hear me out there?
Who's talking? We can't tell.
That's me. All right, just a reminder also that those of us all in attendance, we do need to keep our masks on. So just a reminder, please to keep them up. Failure to do so, unfortunately, we could have to adjourn the meeting, which I do not want to do. So that's just our friendly reminder. Before we begin, also, please join us for a moment of silence as we approach the 20th anniversary of the 9/11 terror attacks. We mourn the tragic loss of lives and injuries, and our deepest sympathies go out to the victims, their families, and their friends. Thank you. Okay, I do not have any announcements to make, but I do want to point out that the 2021-2022 District Emergency Response Plan has been released. It's a very lengthy document which does provide the framework for the West Side School District, which identifies and implements strategies for creating and maintaining a safe and secure learning environment for both students and staff. Any of my fellow board members have anything they'd like to add about that? Any questions? Okay? Okay? Okay, it has been posted to the district website. If you would like to take a look at it, it is there for you, and we will be improving that a little later on. Okay, is there any...I'd like to open up invitation to the public to discuss any agenda items at this time? Nothing? Okay. Can I have a motion for the approval of minutes for the August 24, 2021 planning session? Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, personnel, Mr. Taylor?
We have a motion for the approval of probationary appointment amended for David Robano, Assistant Principal, effective August 31, 2021 to August 30, 2025.
Some move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of the probationary appointment of Casey Connolly, Special Education Teacher, effective August 31, 2021 to August 30, 2025.
Some move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of the probationary appointment amended for Anna Domingo, World Languages, effective August 31, 2021 to August 30, 2024.
Some move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of the regular substitute Monica Mangonia, World Languages, effective September 13, 2021 through June 30, 2022.
Some move. Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of the retirement of Thomas Larson Technology, effective March 1, 2022, after 19 and 1/2 years.
Some move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of the retirement of Linda Schmidt's speech, effective January 7, 2022, after 29 and 1/2 years.
Some move. Discussion?
May I simply welcome my congratulations to both Mr. Larson and Mrs. Schmidt. I had the opportunity to work side by side with them over the course of my 27 years in the district, and they will be missed, and we wish them all good health and happy new year retirement.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of the resignation of Nicholas Acavelli, World Languages, effective August 31, 2021.
Some move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of the probationary appointment of Jennifer Dolan Pre-K, effective August 31, 2021 to August 30, 2025.
Some move. Discussion?
I just have one request, Mr. Taylor. I didn't see any resumes in the map for any of the Pre-K teachers, as normally we would receive resumes for new hires. I only saw the resume for our new special education teacher. So I'll just ask this for all of the Pre-Ks that we're approving tonight, if you can kindly forward the resumes to us.
Okay.
Thank you.
These are teaching systems.
The probationary coordinators?
Yes, these are all Pre-K teaching systems. We've already approved all the Pre-K teachers in their early name. But I can get you the resumes for the teaching systems.
That's fine. If I don't have all, I appreciate it. The new teacher hires, I don't have a fault looking at them either, so I don't know if I miss them or when we approve them, if that exists, I just would do that, I appreciate that. Thank you.
We have a motion for the approval...
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry, we have to all read that.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of probationary appointment of Kimberly Kreitz, Pre-K, effective August 31, 2021 to August 30, 2025.
Some move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of the probationary appointment of Kirsten Ryder, Pre-K, effective August 31, 2021 to August 30, 2025.
Some move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of probationary appointment of Kimberly Cooney, Pre-K, effective August 31, 2021 to August 30, 2025.
Some move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of the probationary appointment of Jordan Galvin, Pre-K, effective August 31 to 2021 to August 30, 2025.
Some move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of probationary appointment of Pamela Gaffney, Technology, effective August 31, 2021 to August 30, 2025.
Some move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of the resignation of Megan Reagan, Computer TA, effective August 31, 2021.
Some move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of the Civil Service resignations as listed on your agenda.
Some move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of probationary appointment of Carolyn Barberito, Senior Office Assistant, effective September 13, 2021.
Some move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of the probationary appointment of Kimberly Degare, Special Education Aide, effective September 10, 2021.
Some move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of the probationary appointment of Taylor Dundon, Special Education Aide, effective September 15, 2021.
Some move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of probationary appointment of Teresa Gabriel, Special Education Aide, effective September 20, 2021.
Some move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of the probationary appointment of Kirsten Girardi, Special Education Aide, effective August 31, 2021.
Some move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of probationary appointment of Jennifer Held, Special Education Aide, effective September 10, 2021.
Some move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of probationary appointment of Michelle Hopkin, Special Education Aide, effective September 1, 2021.
Some move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of probationary appointment of Amy Nebraska, Cafeteria Aide, effective September 9, 2021.
Some move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of the probationary appointment of Michelle Jackwell, Cafeteria Aide, effective August 31, 2021.
Some move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of Lisa Zizek, Part-Time Food Service Worker, effective September 10, 2021.
Some move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of probationary appointment of Lisa McKenna, Special Education Aide, effective August 31, 2021.
Some move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of Kristen Miller, Special Education Aide, effective September 10, 2021.
Some move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of probationary appointment of Maureen Pike, Special Education Aide, effective September 9, 2021.
Some move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of probationary appointment of Kristi Redina, Special Education Aide, effective September 9, 2021.
Some move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of Pamela Rametta, Special Education Aide, effective September 17, 2021.
Some move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of probationary appointment of Veronica Rosado, Cafeteria Aide, effective September 13, 2021.
Some move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of the probationary appointment of Nicole Young, Special Education Aide, effective September 2, 2021.
Some move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of the changes in title as listed on your agenda.
Some move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of the substitute food service worker, Maintenance Mechanic 2, a paraprofessional, as listed on your agenda.
Some move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of the alternative school coordinators as listed on your agenda.
Some move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of the auditorium technicians as listed on your agenda.
Some move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of the concert hall managers as listed on your agenda.
Some move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of the permanent substitute teachers as listed on your agenda.
Some move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of the adult education instructors as listed on your agenda.
Some move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of the substitute teachers as listed on your agenda.
Some move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of the fall middle school coaches as listed on your agenda.
Some move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of the instructional swim and family swim program supervisors and lifeguards as listed on your agenda.
Some move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. So I don't have to ask what you've been up to lately, Mr. Taylor. It's fairly obvious. All right, thank you. All right, curriculum update, Ms. Morrison?
Thank you, Mr. Tussi. Good evening, everyone. I would just like to start off by thanking our administrators, our teachers, our staff, our parents, and our students for a great opening of school. Our students are back in the classrooms, they are happy to be together and enjoying themselves. One of my biggest joys this year was seeing our two full-time Pre-K classes in each of our elementary buildings. The kids are getting into the routine of being with their classmates and getting to know, you know, their friends in the different places around the building, so it's really nice. Congratulations to everyone for a great start. Yesterday, I sent out a letter in regard to the continuity of instruction for quarantined or isolated students. Quarantined students are those students that come in contact with a COVID-positive individual, and therefore must quarantine. Isolated students are those students that are COVID-positive. So we provided that information yesterday. We are looking to provide homebound instruction after students are absent for more than three days. The instruction will be given by West Side School Teachers. We hope to have it up and running within the next few weeks. Compensatory instruction will be provided should students be in need of it before we have the process up and running, and as additional information becomes available, we will make it available to all parents. At the elementary and middle school levels, we have started our fall benchmark assessment. They will be taking place throughout the month of September and into October. After those assessments, we will have RTI meetings, which are team meetings, at each of the buildings, to discuss the results, see how students are doing in our classrooms at this point, and to determine any type of remediation or intervention that may be necessary. Thank you, Mr. Tussi.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Morrison. Okay, we have our report on board committees. So, Mr. Antonello, what would you report on the education committee?
Thank you, Mr. Tussi. The E committee met on August 31 at Beach Street Middle School at 7:00 PM. In attendance were committee members, myself, Mrs. Brown, Mrs. LaRosa, also board members that were present, Mr. Tussi, Mr. McCann, Mr. McInnis, Mr. Montatello. Administrators that were present, Superintendent Burns, Assistant Superintendent Ms. Morrison, Assistant Superintendent Ms. Plati, and Mr. Taylor. The first topic discussed was the elementary literacy update. Mrs. Morrison presented the committee with an extensive overview of the literacy plan for the 2021-2022 school year. The goal is to provide teachers structured literacy programs and training in order to help the students. This month, and starting tomorrow, the elementary reading resource and other teachers will be trained in the Wilson Fourth Edition Reading Program. In October, Grade 3 through 5 teachers will be trained in the Words Their Way Program to address phonics and vocabulary. Later in the fall, they will be trained in the Patterns and Power Program focused on text. Later this year, K-6 teachers will be trained in key beginning readings. Also this fall, data literacy training will provide K-5 teachers and elementary principals in order to use data to inform instruction. In January, K-1 grade teachers will be trained in Fundamentals, which focuses on foundational skills of reading. Lastly, an in-district, Avicii collaborative consultant will help implement these instructional practices by modeling and co-teaching. Mrs. Morrison also provides the committee with important district aims of reports in literacy and math. It was also noted that new kits and other materials were purchased in order to aid in this training. Lastly, homebound instruction for quarantined students at home discussed. The meeting ended at 7:40.
Thank you, Ms. Antonello. Finance Committee, Mr. McInnis?
Thank you. The committee met on August 31, 2021. Committee members present for Andrew LaRosa, Peter McCann, myself, board members in attendance, Mr. Antonello, Debbie Brown, Dr. Montatello, and Ms. Tussi. Administrator present, Superintendent Burns, Ms. Plati, Ms. Morrison, and Mr. Taylor. The purpose of the meeting is always to review the warrants for the month and discuss fiscal burden on pertinent system matters. First, we reviewed the treasurer's reports, the extracurricular ones reviewed, presented in acceptability committee. The payroll summary report for August and the internal claims audit report for August were presented in acceptability committee. The system manager audit travel report for the period from August 1 to August 25 was presented in acceptability committee. And the payroll certification for the pay period in 2020 was presented in acceptability committee. The finance committee received and reviewed the warrants, and we discussed the following for how to spend, I thought it was. A pool of contracts for Ask Us Lease Amendments in East Orange University School District for 2021-2022 summer and fall. On Canadian neuropsychology for 2021-2022, and Parrot School District for 2019 to 2022. Now, we did have one discussion, the external auditors, RSC, who will discuss the year-end audit at the start of the planning session on October 1. Meeting was adjourned at 7:46.
Thank you, Mr. McInnis. And onto Building and Grounds Committee with Mr. McCann.
Thank you, Mr. Tussi. The Building and Grounds Committee met on August 31 at 7:15 PM at Beach Street Middle School. All committee members and board members were in attendance, along with administrators, Mrs. Burns, Mrs. Morrison, Ms. Plati, Mr. Taylor, and Mr. Tussi. We discussed several projects. The facility improvement project is still underway, so we're still working on the bond from several years ago, along with capital improvement projects that were approved on last year's budget vote. So we've got some good projects going on in the district with those monies to ensure the safety and the structural soundness of the school and enhance some of our projects. We have, over the last two years, discussed solar panels on the roof, so we're getting very close to finishing the architectural designs and potentially start that project in the next six weeks. We are making sure that it doesn't interfere with any of the education that goes on within the buildings, but that's an exciting project, so we'll have the solar panels throughout the entire district once the project is complete. Aresco was the chosen vendor there, and exciting times for the project. The last item that we discussed was the MESSERA Community Advisory Board. So we are in the process of finalizing a postcard that will go out and contact every household, which will give me the opportunity to sign up and start being selected for a committee that will meet and try to bring options to the table for what we should do with the MESSERA property moving forward. Now, I know this has been a discussion for...the MESSERA property has been a discussion for about two years. We...the focus the last three months has been getting the schools back and open and getting students back in the school, but we have not forgotten about it, and we should start that project after we select a committee. So look for that postcard in the mail, and if anyone read the Battle on Beavis today, there was an article about it as well. So we are on top of that, and you should be seeing the postcards go out to give you a link to sign up to be on that committee. The meeting adjourned at 7:30, and...
Okay, thank you, Mr. McCann. And our last committee report on the Special Education Committee, once again, Mr. McInnis.
Thank you. The committee met this morning at 8:30 at District Office. Committee member present for yourself. Administrator present for June Dowling and Ms. Morrison. We discussed the special education recommendations for the month. There were only a couple at the beginning of the school. We discussed that. The beginning of the school year went fairly smoothly, and discussed some student requests. The meeting ended at 8:00.
Thank you, Ms. McInnis. Okay, business items, Ms. Plati?
Thank you, Mr. Tussi. We have a motion for the approval of the contracts and agreements as listed on the agenda.
Some...discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you.
That was it?
Yes.
I apologize. Okay, can I have a motion for the approval of the 2021-22 District Emergency Response Plan? Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Can I have a motion for the approval of the revised 2021-22 Resolution for the Certification of Lead Evaluators, Elite Evaluators? Some move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Can I have a motion for the approval of the Ask Us Lease Amendment? Some move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Can I have a motion of the approval of the Whitehead Memo, Memorandum of Agreement Regarding Attendance Recording? Some move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Can I have a motion for the approval of Whitehead Nurse's Chapter Memo of Agreement Regarding Attendance Recording? Some move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Can I have a motion of the approval of the Whitehead Teaching Assistance Chapter Memo of Agreement Regarding Attendance Recording? Some move. Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries? Can I have a motion for the approval of Teamster's Vocal 237 Operations Memo of Agreement Regarding Vacation Carrierover? Some move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Okay, thank you. Superintendent's Report? Mrs. Burns?
Thank you, Mr. Tussi. So Mrs. Morrison mentioned teachers and staff return to school on Tuesday, August 31 for Superintendent's Conference Day, and our students returned on Wednesday, September 1. I would like to express my appreciation to the entire instructional and support staff for ensuring a smooth opening of schools, and especially our clerical, custodial, IT, and administrative colleagues who worked diligently throughout the summer to prepare for our students and staff returns. It really was so rewarding to see how excited the students were to return to school and our athletes on the various fields and gymnasiums. So we're looking forward to a great year all around. Check out the district website and our Facebook page for pictures of your children. There are a lot of them up there, and we're constantly adding to it. Our enrollment stands at 3,804 students, an overall decrease of 125 students from the first day of school last year. That number does not include our 158 Pre-K students. What's interesting about the decrease is that I cannot remember a time when our register all was busier at the end of August welcoming new students to the district, but we did have quite a number of students withdraw throughout the summer. So we're seeing what many other surrounding districts are seeing, which is a lot of transience right now, as people take advantage of the market and sell their homes, and in some cases, they're buying homes in our district. Tomorrow, we will observe Patriot Day District Live, which is officially this Saturday, the 20th anniversary of 9/11. Each building will take a moment of silence tomorrow to honor and remember those lost and the heroic acts of courage from first responders, healthcare providers, and others who came together to save the injured and prevent further loss. So, keep them in our memory, never forget. Thank you, Mr. Tussi.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Burns. I have no notice or reminders to discuss at this time, so I would like to invite the public to come up and speak.[1691.14] Okay, and, uh, again, just a reminder, when you do come up and speak, please make sure that you are wearing your mask. Uh, thank you, and, uh, let me check this in order. All right, I have Terrence Tully. You can come down, please.
My question part of the new curriculum that's being implemented in the district.
I'm gonna, can I call you? Can I just, can you speak up a little bit?
Sure. Culturally responsive training? No? It's not bullying. So my question is part of the culturally responsive training that being implemented? Yes, no, crazy?
Tell, tell me, your question is about?
Culturally responsive training.
Culturally responsive training.
CRT?
CRT.
You guys, now, is it version here or you gonna know?
No.
You're trying to confuse.
There is no CRT being taught in our district.
Oh, oh. Excuse me. I'm sorry.
Please.
You know, I wanted to clarify your question. You're asking about culturally responsive training, not, not, not critical race theory.
Listen, essentially the same thing, same acronym.
No, they're not. But, 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 yes, ma'am.
Absolutely. Excuse me?
We do not teach, nor have we ever, nor do we intend to teach critical race theory.
So what is this then? Because you go to New York State Department of Education website where you're telling your curriculum, based on all this framework and some of the people that contributed to this are listed on your, uh, culturally responsive training, same acronym, same, same, essentially this. Please, if, if nobody knows, go on and look. So is this being implemented? Where'd it come from?
We are not teaching critical race theory.
I didn't say that. Culture, CRT, culturally responsive training. Didn't we get a letter a few weeks ago? Everyone looks confused.
We do, we do, no, no. We do teach children to be accepting.
That's innate. Every parent would be a teacher, their kids be here.
And that's exactly what we're doing.
Okay, so we don't need this, that's not, you guys should be teaching history, math, the basic. We teach our kids values, morals, home. That's innate. That's a gift. Yeah. Right? So, 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 who, who, who implemented this? Who, whose idea was to bring this in? This is my question. This is my first time here. So how does this work?
So at this point, uh, nothing has been implemented. Right now, we are going to be exploring diversity, equity, and inclusivity.
Are we, are we not inclusive already here?
Yes, in many, in many respects we are. It's really to just make sure that all members of our student population and community, um, are included. For example, that our special education students have access to the programs and courses and offerings.
These things are in place, but it's not new. These are things that everybody teaches, they're just being invented.
You're absolutely correct.
So I wonder if this stuff came from, where, where we got this from? If you go to your, where this comes from? Who, whose idea was to bring this in? That's what I want to know.
It is an, it's an initiative by the State Education Department for districts to take a look at their curriculum and ensure that we are culturally responsive and inclusive.
Okay, so.
It is not an actual curriculum.
So is it mandated? Was it requested by somebody on this board or within the district?
It is not mandated. It's just the State Education Department is suggesting that we take a look at our curriculum and things that go on in our district to ensure that everyone feels included.
So I don't know how long I have up here, but I have my two pages of questions because if everybody goes through and reads this, I, I assure you that through the next meeting, you'll have this place. I'm sorry, man.
So, Mr. Tully, if you would like to submit your questions in writing, we'll be happy to take a look at them and respond to them.
I think I'm gonna make a hundred copies and hand them out, is what I'd like to do. Um, so this, again, it's not requested by anybody, this, you guys.
That is nothing that we are following at this time.
A whole letter, Rob?
The letter was explaining initially when DEI came up, we were looking to move the process along and start a community discussion on it. The more that I learned about the whole DEI process, I felt that we really needed to slow it down. We are now consulting with Eastern South Ecosies on the best way to move this process forward, and the first step is educating ourselves as members of the administrative team in regard to what DEI is and then eventually move things off.
Yeah, it's, it's, whatever. Um, so with that being said, so you're gonna form a, a committee essentially, right, right?
At some point, I, I do not believe that that is going to happen for well over a year at this point.
So if you dig into the state faith, we're going DEI committees, you're gonna face essentially like a cultural void, you gotta basically go around and come to see color, that's gonna happen, take this, but, so if they read this, please, I hope everybody does.
I have read it.
It's disgusting.
Yeah.
They say, you know, so these things that everybody teaches your kids and I'm, I'm like furious, Rob. It's just going on all over. It's the same ideology as the critical race theory, just with different happening. All people that contributed to this that you guys are gonna implement have contributed to the critical race theory. If you, it's all right here, it's very, very simple. I have paid, Google it all, I have paid for it, I'm gonna print copies and bring that to you. So this is, I, that, so basically this is just, uh, who implored you to, to?
Mr. Tully, if you'd like to submit your questions, we'll be happy to respond, but I think we need to move on from this.
Well, how long do I have? Will you hit me off?
It's, our time has elapsed, but, Mrs. Morrison, uh, correctly if I'm wrong, is it, is it safe to say that as of right now for the remainder of this year, that we are not making any implementations or any changes to the DEI program?
That is correct.
Changes being what?
Whatever they might be.
We are not making any changes to our curriculum in regard to what you are speaking about, and we possibly might not ever wind up making any changes to our curriculum. We're going to take a look at it. As Mrs. Burns said, we regularly review our curriculum to make sure that we are providing our students with well-rounded learning experiences, and that might be the ultimate result of our committee work.
And then to answer your question, I'm sorry to cut you off, this is nothing that's being initiated by any of our faculty, staff, or board management?
Yeah, but I, I, my, my main, I wanna know where it came from. I wanna know the person that have implored and wanted to implement this to our district. Is that my main? I hope that's where I'm gonna lay it, you know, that's my question.
And you'd have to contact the State Education Department, I would imagine, right?
No, they didn't just say, hey, Westside, if somebody here had.
No, this, this is being done to all school districts in New York State.
Are there, is there any sort of grants or funds behind this thing?
I don't know.
At the school too? The trade, well, do these have to get trained in this stuff?
Uh, that, Ms. Morrison, do you have anything to say on that?
The first step is really educating the administrative team to get an understanding of what, um, the work is going to entail, and we have partnered with Eastern South Ecosies in that regard, as have other school districts across the island.
So who's gonna educate? You guys on, on, uh, culturally responsive training? Who, who's responsible for that?
There are various speakers that Ecosies brings in to talk about that.
All right, Mr. Tully, it's a sacred time. Uh, I wanna give everyone an opportunity to speak tonight, so I say thank you again for coming up to the podium. And then just go to, please, uh, and we will thank you. All right, next up we have Nicole Tully. So, we're good, Nicole? Okay, thank you. All right, we have, uh, and listen, I apologize, I'm botching names again, it's what I do best. Uh, Christine Manserelli?
Christine, uh, Manserelli, but that's okay. Is that better? Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
I wanted to know regarding the homebound instruction information that was sent home, I can't see because of my less of a fog and, uh, um, why did we wait until the school year began to figure out how we're going to accommodate students that are foreign?
Throughout the summer, we have been discussing how we were going to approach the new school year, and because there were so many, uh, different things in motion throughout the summer, it was really difficult to definitively determine where we were going to be at the start of the school year. A part of the process of putting this homebound instruction together is getting our teachers to provide input that they are able to provide the service for our students. So we needed to wait, so we got back to the beginning of the school year to reach out to our teachers and get the group of teachers that are going to provide these services.
Okay, so that'll leave my next question for the children that are receiving homebound instruction. It'll be issued by Westside's schoolteachers. Will it be during school hours?
It will not. It will be after school hours and it will be virtual.
So now children who are involved in extracurricular sports or tutoring or anything else that can even be virtual, they're gonna now have to change their entire schedule because they can't be accommodated during regular school hours?
Well, I think, Mrs. McGinnis, if children are being quarantined or isolated, they would not be able to be participating in those activities.
There's a lot of online art classes, there's music classes, there's a lot of things that could be for lunch.
But these are, these are virtual, and typically the teachers, most of them will be hours. If we can't get a teacher, unfortunately, we need to go the route that we have in the past, use iTeeter and a number of, you know, a lot of.
Familiar with it, it's a shit show, I used my language last year.
But typically the teachers are pretty flexible as far as, um, you know, making sure that they're accommodating.
So then if Westside's schoolteachers can't accommodate, that it'll be through iTeeter?
Probably, pro, I'm not going to promise that, but probably right now. They're having the same problems many other districts have, which is getting qualified, certified personnel to do these type of work.
So, and the hours listed for, um, for the students, what, for each particular subject, that was if they're quarantined for ten to fourteen days, what if, is that per week? Is that per, how is that time allotted for their instruction? Four hours for math, is that per week? Because if they're quarantined for fourteen days, are they only getting four hours of math in fourteen days? How is that being figured out?
Most children will not be quarantined, quarantined for fourteen days. An isolated child may, but hopefully that would be a very rare incident. Quarantine, um, most students or parents are quarantined for ten days, after which they're typically released, and I know we're just talking like semantics here, so, but four days can make a difference. Um, but basically they're getting one-to-one instruction. So when you're talking about, are you talking secondary level or elementary?
I'm not, I'm not, I don't have a problem with the time frame that you're offering. I just wanted to know what is that allotted for? Is that for a week or is that for the whole ten-day quarantine they're getting there for? I just want a clarification on what that entails. Is that four hours of math? Is that for their ten-day quarantine or is that for their five-day school?
Right, so over the course of ten days, typically you would probably get two weekends in there or one weekend, so you're really talking about most kids missing a, a full week. So that would be a week worth of, you know, five hours for elementary, ten hours for secondary. So it's typically approximately a week, but if it turns out to be a longer period of time, then clearly they would be on.
So that, that'll be taken, I guess, on a basis by case.
Yes.
And now, how is their grading gonna be accommodated if they're out of, if they're not being instructed with their class? How is their grading midterm, project? How is that gonna be accommodated, especially in secondary school education?
I saw you going to the.
In most cases, we are hopeful that the homebound instruction is going to be provided by the, to the student's actual teachers. So the work that the teachers do with the students during the homebound session, the assessments that they give will just automatically be put into, uh, the teacher's grading system. Uh, in cases where it may not be that same teacher, we will look to obviously have the teacher that provided the homebound services collaborate and communicate with the classroom teacher to incorporate the work and the assessments that were utilized during that time.
And then children with special needs?
Children with special needs will be taken on an individualized basis. We will look at the student, we will look at what their program is, the services that they receive, and the services will be provided.
Okay. Shows that there's a lot of work that's going into this. It is really disappointing that it waited until school already began to start thinking of the answers to these questions. Nothing's really concrete, everything's kind of up in the air. That's very disappointing. I felt the homebound instruction with my high school child last year, it was a disaster. I needed an assistant to keep her schedule straight. It was, it was very, very difficult, and the teachers were phenomenal. I have not a bad word to say about them, but it is very difficult to accommodate after hours education, dealing with Westside's teachers, iTeeter teachers, and other children if you have them in your household. It was very, very difficult.
We agree, it's not an ideal situation, and logistically it is very, very difficult to organize, but, um, I, I, I hear what you're saying, and, and I agree, it's not the ideal situation.
And my last question, I know my time went out, but now with the governor's new back-to-school program, will Westside's been sure that there are no vaccine global sites on our schools?
I can't, you know, nobody has approached us about holding a location, um, as a community group, as a, as a district that opens its facility, it's a community group all the time, um, you know, I, I can't say one way or the other what might happen in that regard.
So you would, you would be open to that idea or you would be against it? As, as a board? Are you for it or are you against it? I don't know.
We haven't even really discussed it as, as a board.
That's disappointing. Why is nothing discussed? Everything is just, we'll get back to you, we'll get back to you. It's, it's really disappointing, and I saw it within the minutes from my last meeting, my question about parents getting into the classroom, nothing's been done about that with the PTA memo said that until at least December thirty-first, parents will not be allowed in classrooms. So there haven't been any steps to accommodate parents getting back into education. That's disappointing.
And, uh, obviously, there's some difficult questions, and we don't always necessarily have the answer you want to hear at that moment in time, and I think sometimes it's best to say it is something that we need to discuss and, and make sure that we have all parties representative and we come up with the best conclusion and not just give you an answer for the sake of giving you an answer. Uh, Rosa Randazzo?
Uh, so, the reason I'm up here actually is to talk about vaccines. Uh, we're not there yet, but this is my biggest fear for our children, and we all know that it's coming. The vaccine mandate is coming, and I wanna know, what do you guys, how do you feel about that? For it to the kids or against it? I know, I know you're not getting a cert. There's never a cert. Um, but I do wanna, I do want to state how I feel about it, and I want, I think everyone needs to educate themselves and start preparing now. Let's not wait till it's here, like we did with the mask mandate from school starting, we waited till it's here. It's not good enough. Um, so, here's some, uh, some facts that I learned that I want to share. First of all, now vaccinated for shot. Uh, like the shot, the only purpose is to help minimize symptoms, which in my opinion is actually worse, it's more dangerous because now you've got two-thirds of the population walking around with COVID, no symptoms, spreading it like wildfire, and then the unvaccinated have the quarantine for ten days while you guys are four days. Uh, second, the shot that was actually FDA approved a couple of weeks ago, if you know, is the Pfizer COVID-19, not available in the United States at all. Nowhere, you can't find it. The, sorry. Um, if you call anywhere to get a vaccine, you have no choice in what vaccine you get, whatever they have, they will tell you what they have, you just get what they give you. The CDC website says that the Pfizer BioNTech, the emergency use of the Waco vaccine, that one seems to be used interchangeably with COVID-19. Well, why wasn't that FDA approved? Just a thought. Uh, next, I'm going on the Verid website, and as of August twenty-seventh, there were injured, dismembered, first children six to ages seventeen, ninety thousand six hundred and seventy-four adverse reactions reported because of the COVID shot, and thirteen thousand two hundred and thirty-three from the Pfizer BioNTech vaccine. Just to get a mention, that's about seventy percent, maybe that's why I'm not gonna take it. But they're saying it's safe to use. So just to compare, uh, everybody knows the MMR recently on umbrella, right? I'm vaccinated, not even my back at all, my kids are vaccinated, real vaccines. Um, the MMR, since nineteen ninety, the last thirty-one years, six thousand and nine adverse reactions. The math, that's about a hundred and ninety-three a year compared to nineteen thousand six hundred and seventy-four in less than a year for the COVID vaccine. I, I know, it's pretty sure, but I wanna put it out there, I want everybody to start thinking about this and start preparing, because they're gonna do it, they're gonna try to force our kids, and I don't think it's worth it. I don't think it's worth the reactions, the, uh, the, the, um, the adverse reactions, just to, just to make it clear. So the most common, just to finish one second?
Please.
The most common serious reaction of adverse reactions in children and adolescents, myocarditis and cardiac arrhythmias, damage to the child's heart, irreversible, irreversible. So I just think we all need to kind of start thinking about it. The government is not a friend, pharmaceutical companies not a friend, they're not trying to figure out anything. They're trying to keep you a little less sick so they can keep their money. Um, and I'd like, I'd like to know, maybe if you discuss it, or maybe at the next meeting we can talk about how you guys feel about vaccine.
I will, uh, I'll be in full transparency, I've said it before and I'll say it again, as, as a parent, as a father of four daughters, um, I am extremely apprehensive of getting them vaccinated. Um, I, this is, this is something that obviously is, I, I don't, I don't even know if it's safe to say what happens if it's mandated, I, I, you know, it's questions that we need to discuss and what will happen. Um, you know, it is, I, I agree, I agree, it is coming.
Have to be prepared to fight together.
Thank you. But I think, I think it's safe to say that, that we as a board, whereas we, we make different personal opinions, and I don't wanna speak on behalf of anyone, but I do know for a fact that we are in constant communication and we are talking and we are discussing, and we will continue to do what we always think is in the best interest of kids, uh, and how that plays out, I, I can't tell you, um, but, you know, for me, again, personally, I, I share the same apprehension, and I'm not a conspiracy theorist, um, and I'm not, I'm not saying that you are, but I get it, I understand your concern, and I'm right I understand your concern, and I'm right there with you. And I think, I think, anytime, I think anytime something is new, people are nervous. And one thing I'll say is, I'm trying not to, this is just personally speaking, I'm trying not to be judgmental, I'm trying to be curious, and I'm trying to learn as much as possible about it.
I think they have a 99% survival rate, and our kids seem to matter, right? The little kids are not getting sick, they're not having symptoms, and I don't think that they need to be poisoned, because right now it's COVID.
Okay. So thank you. All right, next up, we have Dorina, and this is...
Daniel.
How do you say it?
Daniel.
And you probably told me that last time.
Like ham and shell.
Okay, thank you.
Asking God to be with all of us today. But this is the last time about him, we have nothing. I like saying that in a public setting, because it's not appropriate usually to say in a public setting, that's what makes you want to say it more. So, just to highlight the first little bit of saying, just information. The CRT issue is pretty much what I talked about last time, but in a very roundabout way. And the information I gave you in the handout to the bibliography was to try to give you a conservative perspective of how to handle those topics in a more unifying way. Because CRT is absolutely positively leftist ideology. There's no way this not, it's a mythology, it's letting the mythology to the high schools and elementary schools. It really has been around in college for the last two decades by academia, from people who went to college in the 60s and 70s, and slowly and surely is trickling down into every aspect of college and the other educational hierarchy. It took a huge impact with the George Floyd case, unfortunate case for all intended purposes and people involved in that, very sad events. Look what it's done to our police and the lack of respect, the riots all over the country. It's heartbreaking, okay? There's a better way to teach children that slavery is a sin on our country, but our country is not systemically racist. And I think it's very important for you all to do some reflection as a board administration, and figure out what you think we are as a country in order to educate the students in our community. Our history teachers for the past 10 years have done a phenomenal job of educating our students on what America is, what has been done for our country, that a people have lost their lives. My dad was in the Air Force, my stepdad worked for Grumman, my father-in-law was in World War II, and I think that this society has no clue what the past veterans have done for our society. I find we are a spoiled nation who basically bickers over nonsense, as opposed to looking at the real issues that are spreading in our country. Look at Afghanistan. We're worried about gun control here, but we go and give all of our military aid there to the people. What I wanted to talk about, what I wanted to talk about most of the minutes again, and again, I'm not angry, I'm not frustrated, I just have to defend myself once again about that news. Okay, so basically, it's very difficult for you to talk publicly, because things can be taken out of context very easily. I complained about the reading choices for the summer reading program of the AP students, and I touched very gently on Supa. In fairness to the school district, Supa has a warning for the parents to let you know what's going to be covered. My issue with Supa was, why is it that we have to have content like that? Why can't there be discussion with the colleges of what they're exposing children to? The curriculum in Supa is basically all the things I talked about on one side of the political aisle. Basically, gender, transgender issues, how many genders are there? All those things, and a conversation about that topic. In fairness to the district, it tells the parents what the kids are going to be exposed to, I have no problem with that. What I have a problem with is, though, if you're having those kind of conversations in classrooms that have stickers on their door, that limits dialogue, how can you possibly have a class like that? Because what we're losing is diversity of thought. We can be, we can be inclusive of everything except what we think. So how can you have a rational, open-ended discussion on both sides of the aisle if you're having safety, three little stickers on every classroom door? That's what I was trying to say about that. Has nothing at all to do with the teaching of the classes. It goes deeper than that. My issue with the, then it says, here's what it says. Mrs. National spoke about the importance of choice. And is disappointed in the way society is headed. Well, that's not all, for Miss National, facts don't care about your feelings. Okay, it's my opinion, it doesn't mean I'm right, okay? My point here is the choice of reading. It was basically that, what I said, the choice, I don't agree with masks, but, you know, we're not people who can advocate for that issue. My point is that the choice was about reading topics in the summer. Let the kids pick their own books across the board, don't assign, because it's a very good excuse to put lots of topics and books on that list, which many of them were reflective anti-Christian values, radical feminism, anti, you know, the whole issue with diversity, critical race theory, they're there, they're in the listings, right? So my point is not that, then it goes on to say she's disappointed in the English department... Okay, Supa, I read that already. I'm not disappointed in the whole English department. I was disappointed in the reading, the way it's being done, the way it's being reflected, that is not a fair representation. You need to have a fair, balanced education across the board. Otherwise, the students are being indoctrinated, plain and simple, okay? The other thing I wanted to mention...
I'm gonna give you one more minute, okay?
Give you two minutes, okay? Because I want to make it very clear that I'm not against any specific group of people. My issue again is fair and balanced. I'm not sure if you saw in the news, and you might think I come here and say, "Oh, she's complaining about the rainbow flags on the classroom doors again," but it's step by step, decade by decade, and it's small. And sometimes people in the guise of being kind and empathetic have better things in their mind, which is power. And that's what I'm concerned about, that's what the gentleman who first focused this does now, okay? And that's not a conspiracy theory. It's slow, but it comes out, it seems like it's fast, but it's been in the works for a long, long time. If you look at the news, you'll see the teacher who got disciplined thankfully, who took the American flag down and put the rainbow flag up, and had the students say the pledge of allegiance to very young children. That's disgraceful. And that's what I'm talking about. You cannot, you can't turn your eyes to that and just... I know people have cited, "Well, these group of people, the LGBTQ, and all these groups, they have suicide rates that are so high." If you look at the data from decades ago, it was high already. And I don't like when people use those people to make their agendas happen. That's, that's what bothers me.
All right, so I thank you for your time, and I just want to clarify that there's not a particular question that you have, as much as you just want to reinforce the need for fair, fair and balanced approach to education.
The questions that I have moving forward, the question I have is exactly what the gentleman was talking about. Where are you going to take this? I understand completely it's a state initiative. And that's why I'm very frustrated when we are, because they, they are taking our freedoms away. They are. It starts very slowly. Let me just finish, I almost finished. The masks are the last straw for a lot of people. Because the, if you know, if you look at the research, masks don't work. They really don't. And, and the reality is, is that, it's just, if you look at the timing of the masks, and everything else I'm saying, and I could talk obviously a long time about this, if you look at the timing, when everything happened, it was right at the end of July, beginning of August, right before school became back into everybody's minds, we were doing fine. And all of a sudden, Delta becomes so serious. And the reporting of those numbers were oftentimes not accurate. They did not give you the deaths in relation to how many people are in the population. So all I'm saying is, like the lady just said, we have to work together, because we don't want to lose our country. And God expects us to all love all people. And that's not what I'm talking about, with education, public education, at least at the minimum, should be fair and balanced.
Well, if the time were to come, Mrs. Morrison would be, there would be a community committee, I believe? He said we would, so people would have a chance to be a part of that committee and make their voice opinions. Unfortunately, just, I want to make sure everyone else can get a chance in. If you could email me that last question statement, I'd be more happy to respond.
This is a compliment, actually. This is a compliment. I always try to come with both sides. The compliment is this, a lot of times when people come in frustrated with issues, people take it personal. I tried saying that to previous board members, it didn't get me very far. The administration, I always tell, I try to tell students, children, that when I did an adulation committee work with them, as my job, I tell parents that. If you have a problem with a certain administrator or a teacher, even to little children, you don't have to go and use the teacher that you have. You find someone that you know is going to listen to you and really welcome you. Not everybody's the same, doesn't mean you don't keep trying. With this issue, with the reading issue, I had an administrator who listened to me, who didn't dismiss me, and the issue was resolved in a fair way with a teacher who's phenomenal already. So I'm just saying, I think when people come here and talk, they're frustrated because of the three minutes, because they've already been the past disrespected. So I appreciate, Mr. Tussi, your kindness last meeting, and I just caution you, please, don't let your ego get too big, okay? But thank you very much.
Absolutely. And didn't you say that you didn't like public speaking before you started? Because you're very good at it. All right, thank you so much. Ronnie Walrath?
All right, good evening, everyone. I'm going to begin this evening with a quote from President Reagan. Okay, sorry, can you hear me now? Yeah, better? Okay. I'm going to begin this evening with a quote from President Reagan, a quote that has never been as important as it is right now. If you heard Biden speak today, you already know that. Freedom is never more than one generation away from extinction. In the bloodstream, it must be fought for, protected, and handed on for them to do the same. For one day, we will spend our sunset years telling our children, and our children's children, what it was once like in the United States where men were free. Yesterday, I sent court and superintendent Burris an email asking some questions. Mr. Tussi replied today, letting me know that he did not know the answer to those questions at the moment. I then followed up by calling Governor Hochul's office to ask those same questions. I spoke to an agent, who transferred me to another agent, who put me on hold to speak to her supervisor. No one was able to answer my questions. The language used was, "I don't know, I have no idea." And the most infuriating of all, "There is no role." What was my question? Since masks have now been mandated in our schools, what is the metric that will lead to masks becoming optional? Is it infection rate? If so, what's the number? Is it hospitalizations? If so, what is the number? Is it deaths? If so, what is the number? Is it vaccinations? If so, what's the number? I ask you, what is the goal that we are aiming to achieve by universally masking our children? Will the masks come off when we meet that goal? In the end, I was told that I should ask my local district at the next board meeting. So here I am, asking my local district, does anyone know the answer? Because I think I do. Masks, mandatory vaccinations for everyone. When will society wake up? I'm going to leave you all with one last question, and I'd like for you all to answer, if you don't mind. Are you personally afraid of COVID?
Are we personally afraid of COVID?
Yeah.
Well, first of all, let me backtrack to one thing that you said about our goal. I know that our goal is to keep our children in school and keep them involved in-person instruction. That's our number one goal. As far as, am I afraid of COVID? Are you asking on behalf of my children, on behalf of myself, on behalf of my father, who is bedridden with COPD, and if he were to catch COVID, could it kill him? Absolutely. So in that regard, I am afraid for my father, 100%. Am I afraid for myself? I like to think that I am a healthy adult, and I do have high blood pressure, and I'm on medication for that, if you care. But I don't necessarily... Am I living my life as if I'm afraid of COVID? I'm living my life to the fullest. When I am indoors, when I am in school, when I teach, and when I'm here, I'm wearing my mask. I am personally vaccinated. When I go out shopping or I'm outdoors, I don't always wear a mask, depending on where I am. I cannot tell you that I live my life in fear, but sometimes I do follow mandates and protocols, whether I agree with them or not. And it's not the type of question that I can just give you a yes or no. Because when you ask me if I'm afraid, I have to break my life into, break my life up into different categories. My children, myself, my parents, my brother, my nephew. And so, yes, I am not naive enough to know that COVID is real, people get sick, some people are asymptomatic, some people have died from it. And I can't, I can't deny any of that. Is the likelihood of that happening? I like to think not, but I mean, for what it's worth, that's what I ask you. So again, I do thank you for your time. And as far as you going to the state and asking those questions, I commend you for that, and I commend you for getting put through all those waiting lists and so on and so forth. And like I've said to most of you out there, and those of you that are very passionate about the subject, I commend you all for going forward with that and trying to get the answers that you want. And if we can't give you those answers, then hopefully someone else can. As I said, I can't give you answers that I don't have. So just understand, and I'm going to end this now. It's we up here are not making you wear the masks, please understand that. We are following state guidelines.
Stand with us, fight with us!
Okay.
Now fight with us! Get the M-20 questions!
Mrs. Walrath, thank you, and we will continue. All right, go ahead.
I would like to say, or I would like to finish, with a quote from President Roosevelt. The only thing we have to fear is fear itself.
Okay, Mr. George Giebold?
How are you doing? Okay. As far as following a mandate, you guys don't have to listen to anyone if they tell you that your students have to wear a mask. Because basically, if the state's going to say they're going to pull your funding, that's never happened in the state of New York since, I think it was 1953, since they saw the recording, the commissioners' determinations and decisions. So saying that we have to, again, bringing up the point where you're like, if these parents opt out of state testing, and the state keeps threatening you guys that they're going to pull your funding, and the feds keep threatening they're going to pull your funding, but as the smallest legislative body in local government, which is school board is, you just don't let your parents opt out. So you have the authority and local control to do what you want, and you have plenty of lawyers, which I'm fighting that most of the time in hearings, and you have no problem spending legal fees. So if you want to stand up for these people and not have them wear masks, you would, okay? I usually believe you guys. I believe in masks because I live with someone very old, and they have COPD, and life says to some extent you're right not to wear masks. But... Basically, you guys are 0.3% of the population of this school district. In reality, you guys are an extreme minority, and if you guys want to fight them, you're going to have to have a bigger turnout than this. With that being said, I have another issue. I have a minute 21. I received an email from one of your attorneys today. That informed me, and I forwarded it to Tom Bolz, and I followed it, and I forwarded it to Danisher, and I called the superintendent of schools. He's saying that for a child that is duly classified under 504 in the ADA, that the district's only recourse and means for possible relief and services is going to a CSE meeting. And I quoted Tom, you didn't email, you checked your email. That is a problem with that, because you can't use a CSE meeting for substitute of its sister or cousin statute, which is 504 of the ADA. Because ADA Tom, as you know, is a funding statute, and there's money attached. 504 there's not. So if you guys continue to do so, I'm going to bring in the controller to investigate your district, because you're misappropriating funds. So you have to stop that right away. And I ask you to review the email that I sent, which Mr. Bolz wrote, that that's how you guys are operating, and that, how you're violating is also an additional violation of the Act. And within the next seven days, I would file another hearing request asserting that you are still violating Section 504 of the ADA and the Rehabilitation Act of 1973. Additionally, I'm gonna ask for another question a minute. You guys, the way that you're operating, I believe is in violation of state, federal, law, and the commission of regulations. I don't know where you learned this, I don't know how you're doing it, but Mr. Tussi, I understand that you're a teacher in Hicksville. You may have learned your big habits there. So that being said, I contacted their lawyer, Doug Spencer, today, and as well as I'm investigating West Islip, I'm investigating where you work. And they know I'm investigating where you work, because what you did to a minority student that was protected under 504 and the ADA under my watch, you abused him, and I will not stand for it. See you soon.
Thank you. Okay, Carmella Longo?
Hi, can you hear me? Rogan? First off, I just wanna say that I'm very happy to hear the superintendent curriculum say that we need to have any DI or CRT or anything else in this school district, because Lester Jones is extremely back in the system of racism, and that habit that Mr. Tully had clearly outlines that. So please, again, let's just say that the New York State Education Department's agenda needs to be carefully looked at, because of the people that are currently in power. Secondly, I wanna say, with this gentleman, you are giving up a lot of your rights here, and those rights are our rights. So by having the children and us sit here with masks and arrive to school with masks, you're actually relinquishing your power, our local control, to the Department of Health, which is not a legislative body. Again, the word is mandate, the word is guidance. So the longer you continue this, the worse off we all are. On that point, I also wanna say that this needs to be for 10 NYCRR 2.60, was the first statute passed. This, again, not statute, policy based in law, not law itself, this is what mandated the masks. This was an overreach of governance. This is an abuse of power. So if the board continues with this nonsense, we're gonna have to deem you incapable of doing your job. You're not protecting us. And on that note, I wanna say, just, we have more than 25 people here I can see, so how many people are in favor of masks? Give me a yay? That's nice. So we're not in favor of masks here, so that's really good to know. Moving forward, I do hope you know that 25 voters, okay, or 5% of your voting poll, can call special meetings, correct? So we need to start being careful here, and we need to start listening to what the community wants, because if we continue to relinquish our local control, that is going to cause further issues. Let's stop it, let's get that back, let's go mask optional. If you wanna say, oh, Rose is gonna come after us, uh, no. Let's challenge her to it, just like they said with the opt-out. If you say, oh, she's gonna take us off the board, she's gonna seize control of our board, no. Let's put that to the test. All right? So, and that's a gate lock. Last nine seconds, I want you to listen clearly, and I want the public to be aware, do not relinquish your local control.
Miss Longo? I just wanna confirm, no question you would just make it a statement, I don't wanna ignore you. Correct? It was just a statement? Okay, thank you so much. All right, Lisa Curly?
Good evening. Can you hear me? Oh, I can't do that right. Good evening, how are you guys? So the last meeting that we had, I don't know who it was, but they asked each one of the board members how they felt about vaccinating their children. I know, Mr. Tussi, you are undecided, and I respect that. Who else has children on the board? Mr. Enchanel, how do you feel about vaccinating your children?
Yeah, I was gonna ask, it was the last meeting.
I know, I just...
I don't want my two girls vaccinated. I'm in discussion with my healthcareier.
Mrs. Brown? I understand, okay. So, just in general, what this last speaker was saying, I just am curious, how comfortable is this board with the Department of Health making blanket mandates without the checks and balances? I know you mandated the masks, and I got it, and I know that you said your hands were tied, but I'm just curious how comfortable you are with the whole hands tied thing?
How comfortable are we with the whole, what was the last part?
With the Department of Health making blanket mandates on what we doing here in our school?
Well, personally speaking, I'm not a public health expert, so I do trust that they are making the best decisions for us. It may not be the most popular choice, but I do believe that they are making the best decisions possible.
Okay. And so you're comfortable with them saying, like, Mrs. Curly, I'm sorry, my hands are tied. You're comfortable with that?
I don't know if comfort is the right word, because I don't think any of us are comfortable with what's going on. But comfortable versus accepting, you know, it's a fine line.
So I know that earlier in the year, we had a survey that went home about having a vaccination pod or not, and I know we said no, right? And that's not happening, we're not into that. That's correct, right?
All right, now there's no plan for a vaccination pod?
Okay, so there's no plan, because our stakeholders spoke, and you guys listened to us, and I appreciated that, right?
I just wanna clarify, we have a contract with the county, and through many school districts, all of the sub-counties, to serve as a pod to the meter rise. As I explained at the last board meeting, uh... They handle everything. The only thing we do is... I'd like to answer the question. The only thing we do is provide the location. We do not force anybody to participate. When we originally entered into the agreement, it was trying to be accommodating for our senior citizens, that people get to Stony Grove, and Zellwood, and Brentwood, and everywhere else, right? And so, it has not approached us since, so we do not anticipate, because there are so many locations now off-campus that offer the vaccine. But I don't think that, clearly, we need, we're in a position now where we need to test, so if people wish to take advantage of wherever we go to conduct our staff testing, we will offer that to our staff as well. There is no plan, there is no plan to offer it to your children.
So, okay, okay, I understand. So, I just, I wanted to ask this question, because currently, I don't know if you guys are aware, but there is a bill on the Senate Health Committee floor, it's S4244C, it's active. It's permitting children 14 and up to decide without our consent, so, Mr. Tussi, I know you have a 14-year-old, and you're, Mr. Enchanel, again, myself, we all have children that are over 14. So they are allowed to decide without us whether or not they want to receive a vaccination. So I know that we're not doing it right now, but in the event that we're mandated to do that, then now we have a bunch of 14, 15, 16-year-old, 17-year-old kids who can't drive, who can't drink, who can't consent to adult activity, if you know what I'm saying, without it being, you know, considered a crime. And now we're allowing them to make those choices. Well, excuse me, I'm sorry. I didn't want to interrupt you. And so my other thing is, I don't know, again, this is like an arbitrary question, I guess, but how many of you guys know any child that's ever forged your signature before? Because unfortunately, I have to say, even though my son is a great kid, he did four doors in it for once. And even now, like, without this law going into effect, these kids can go to any website, and so with five clicks, find a vaccination site. I found one today, it's in two seconds, in Bay Shore. And they don't even need the parent to be there. They can have a form that has the parent's signature. Whether or not that is their parent or not, doesn't have to be proven. At some point, Mr. Tussi, I want you to tell me that you're doing something actively to fight for our kids, because you keep mentioning all these women and all these gentlemen, and I wanna know, what are you doing to fight for our kids?
So, here's the difficult position of being a school board member, is that often, those of you in the audience, you're, what you want is what you want, but yet there are a large group of people that are not here, for whatever reason, that might want the opposite. So, no, 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 excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Let's take it for what it is. So what we have to do is sit here without tunnel vision and listen to both sides, take in what both people want, continue to follow mandates, and continue to do what we think is best.
Okay, I understand what you're saying, but what I'm saying to you is, is these mandates, this isn't about the masks, it's not even about vaccines, it's about our government making choices for us, and you guys letting them. And so at some... I'm not saying that you shouldn't wear a mask, I'm not saying you should, I am afraid of COVID, just so you know, I am, sorry. I am not saying you shouldn't wear a mask, or you should wear a mask, or you shouldn't get vaccinated, or you should get vaccinated. All I'm saying is that you should have a choice. And that's it. Just so you're aware, there are organizations, like Save Our Schools, I don't know if you're familiar with this organization, but we're going to join them, and we're, I'm gonna read this for you.
Can you read it quick?
All right, I'll do the best I can, my team. Dear West Islip School Board, we wish to say welcome back to a promising school year. Unfortunately, due to the current state of affairs, this school year has started out under distress. Please accept this respectful advisement to heed the following actions. Legal action against the state is in formulation. This legal action is instrumental to protecting the rights of local authority, parents, school boards, taxpayers, and more. The legal action is not mask first, unmasked. It's not, it is about constitutional rights. New York Code's rules and regulations, code by 10 NYCRR 2.60, will remove all authority from duly-elected school boards. Moving forward, schools will now be required to accept any mandate that is premissed on the regulation, like, you know, you have to wear a purple hat, or whatever. The process of writing, amending, and appealing policy is overridden under this regulation. Amazingly, the Department of Health repealed and advised the regulation by unilaterally ignoring its own mandated procedure, with no legislative oversight, under the guise of a public emergency. As a result of this illegal action, all stakeholders will fall under the jurisdiction of an unchecked authority to adhere to any mandate to the Department of Health's ceasefire. Moreover, the Department of Health officials are not elected. The public has no recourse to free itself from these mandates. There are several superintendents working against the interests of our community and democracy. It is a grave disappointment. The Board of Education does not serve at the pleasure of a superintendent. It is a paramount, sorry, at this juncture to maintain your elected autonomy. We implore you to follow suit with fellow board members from Nassau, Pico, and Lucas Valley that are leading the charge against this unconstitutional and under, undemocratic regulation. There is a small window for our school district to join this legal action and protect our local control of school districts. Please be advised with all due respect, this is in the best interest of our board as representatives of the parents and taxpayers of the West Islip, to immediately contact Hamburger Lane, San Yop, and Martin Hill, and their address. Again, this needs to be done easily. The law firm is going to provide a free consultation, so it is your duty to abide by due diligence and at least hear what they're proposing. The community is waiting to hear back on the position of our board. We expect an emergency session to give this issue the priority it demands. Our outreach is island-wide and committed to the protection of parental choice, local control, and constitutional protections. All school district leadership is being called to action. We must not relinquish our rights to self-government without a fight. Please respond to this email by tomorrow. We will assist you in whatever you need to protect the school district from government overreach. Ignoring this communication will constitute an dereliction of your duties and a violation of your local office. I respectfully am submitting this to record. I want you to please listen to what they have to say. I think at this point, again, not about masks, it's not about mandates, or it's not about vaccines, it is about law enforcement. I really hope that you're gonna protect it, because this is where you get to shining.
Thank you very much. Okay, Lisa Longo? She left? Okay, thank you. Patty McKee?
Hi, I'm questioning the quarantine that I send students due to COVID, like the first camera. I'm getting my touch of change, you know what the rules are, the three days of war, the four more days, three or less. Why are we not using the classroom cameras that we used all of last year? If my child is sent home today, they have to quarantine, you know it. Why are those classrooms, those cameras not on tomorrow for my child to continue her education? Why they not on? Why will they not return home?
Mrs. McKee, one of the things we found, and we've reflected on, the best way to go about this, and I understand that we're very interested in making sure that there is a continuity of instruction, but I think that uniformly, our staff would share, and I know they share it with me, and many parents have as well, that it is very, very difficult to maintain a class of children that are in front of you, and then have children at home that are quarantined or in isolation, participating, maybe doing classically, or whatever the case may be. It is of the three models, in-person, of course, is the absolute best, remote, which is a far second, and then you've got that hybrid model. It is an impossible scenario, and the homebound instruction, at least children are working one-on-one with a teacher...
When it gets set up, right? When it gets set up, that is. Which will release after four days, if you find a teacher to teach my child.
Well, I can tell you that we've been working very diligently in cooperation with our teachers to make sure that if the classroom teacher is not available to address the child directly, that we have a whole ton of people there to step in as quickly as possible.
Okay, so in-person is the best option, or remote is the second best option.
Remote for the whole class.
Hybrid.
Remote for the whole class. The hybrid, I think...
It worked, it worked, Lysia. It stunk, but it worked.
It did not work. It was a, it was a... It was a stopgap measure at the high school, because we could not maintain distancing in the manner in which we needed to do to ensure everyone's safety, but it truly didn't work. I think in large part, it contributed to a lot of distresses that both our staff and students are facing.
I don't agree, I don't agree at all. Put that on the record.
I understand.
I do not agree at all. And I'm like, who made the decision? Did the superintendents, did you make the decision not to turn that classroom camera on the very next day?
We made that decision in collaboration with our educators, who have been working throughout the course of the entire year in that environment.
So I'm gonna say, did the teachers association say we're not doing it?
We worked together to come up with the best way as possible.
That's not an answer, guys. That's not an answer. Now, I'll be very, I love our teachers, I get it, but it's not acceptable, and my child will sit home for three days, we know he or she cannot be in the building. And then on the fourth day, hmm, we're gonna talk about it, but if that happens tomorrow, you can't even have staff to teach her, or him. I cannot teach them. Cannot teach the three doctors. They're not gonna get the grade, the teachers gonna put work on the classroom, they don't look at it? They need to be taught, that's why they come to you every day. It's unacceptable, it's unacceptable, there is no reason why both classrooms... And it's not every day, it's not every class. It's made up by one person.